Chair Cruz, are we ready to begin?
Nicole, we are ready to begin. Okay, the time is 6:11 and I call this Planning Commission meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Eric Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Present.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Present.
Chair Brando Cruz.
Present.
And Commissioner Crystal Malari is absent this evening.
All right. At this time, it is reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on closed-session items only. Comments must be made in person and are limited to three minutes. Comments for items on open-session agenda will be taken when the item is called in open session. Comments for items not on the closed-session or open-session agenda will be heard during the open-session public comment period. There being none, I call this. Call this session to recess for a closed session.
Chair Cruz, are you ready to call open session?
Yes, Nicole, I'm ready to call open session. Okay, the time is 6:34 and the Planning Commission is to reconvene in open session. If you will please rise and read me the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes, roll call for open session, Commissioner Eric Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Present.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Present.
Chair Brando Cruz.
Present.
And Commissioner Crystal Malari is absent.
Okay, Deputy District Attorney Malardo, do you have a report on our closed session?
Yes, thank you. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and members of the public, the Commission convened in open session and after ascertaining that there were no public comments on closed-session items, you adjourned into closed session at 6:12 PM and concluded closed session at 6:32 PM. I will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with provisions of Government Code Section 54-957.1B. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Thank you, Attorney Malardo. Okay, moving on to the public comment. This time is reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or to verbally comment on an item during the meeting. Click the Raise Your Hand button if you are joining by computer and press star nine if joining by phone. When an item is called, the Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the Planning Commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly, provide their name, and any handouts for distributing to the Planning Commission must be emailed by 3:00 PM on meeting day which has passed. At this time, my open public comment.
And Chair Cruz, we have Yvonne Begansky.
I'm also the Conservation Chair for the Napa Salado Audubon Society. I'm here today to kind of talk a little bit about what's going on in American Canyon regarding the growth. There's a new book that was just published this last week. There's been a book launched, it's called The Common Ground by Richard Mendelson. And there's several pages there on the city of American Canyon and it gave me some new information that I thought I'd share with you. He's saying that in the next 10 years, 20% of the population of Napa County will be living here in American Canyon. And that would mean that every square inch of ground is going to be developed, either residential or industrial, and that there will be probably some push for more annexation. And so, when he makes this, and he says there's a lot about the development in American Canyon, but what struck me was how little was actually talked about about conserving parts of American Canyon for wildlife habitat. So, I know the state of California has a 30-30 mandate where 30% of all land is set aside for wildlife and they're trying to get communities to do that. And I know there's some activity towards that and I just wanted to alert the Planning Commission that it's really important that we look at green belts and green areas for the wildlife. And especially when I looked at how much land, you have what, four square miles here? It's not a big, it's not a real big city. And I thought, well, if every square inch of land is going to go, then they're going to lose their open space, they're going to lose their vistas. And the collective footprint of everything is also going to increase the pollution in the area and the congestion. So I wanted the Planning Commission to be aware of this. The book is Common Ground, I'm not pitching the book, but I did read it this afternoon and I thought, oh my gosh, it certainly opened up my eyes about what's happening down here. So, thank you and I'll see you in a few minutes with the other one, thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Are there any other comments from the audience?
If you're on Zoom and would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. Beth, did you want to make a comment?
How could you tell?
I'm sorry.
Good evening, I just have a quick question and it's regarding Napa Cove, not the project, so calm down, Brent. I just have a question on the highway. I know the ingress and egress is supposed to be on Melvin Road, which is my biggest complaint about it, but I noticed on the highway, there's an extra lane there. What is that, has anybody else noticed that? It looks like it's a turn lane, although it doesn't have a turn lane. Does that have to do with the project?
I'll have to take some research, I did see that myself. I know that there, it's the state highway, so Caltrans is involved in what changes are made along the frontage. But we can do some research and let you know if that's intended to be a travel lane or maybe it's a shoulder.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else, either in person or on Zoom, that would like to make comment? If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Chair Cruz, there are no additional public comments.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, my closed public comment. Moving on to agenda changes. Director Cooper, are there any agenda changes?
Chair Cruz and Planning Commission, I would recommend that the Commission reorder tonight's agenda to take the business item first and the public hearing item second.
I'll make a motion that we follow the Director Cooper's recommendation to switch the agenda item, order of agenda items for this evening.
I second.
Okay, it's been regularly moved and seconded that we switch the agenda from business first, public hearing second. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Aye.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Aye.
Chair Brando Cruz.
Aye.
And Crystal Malari is absent this evening.
Okay, Chair Cruz and Planning Commission, members of the public, I'm very pleased to present tonight a workshop on the SDG Commerce 220 Distribution Center Environmental Impact Report. This is an opportunity within the public comment period for the environmental impact report to learn more about the project, notably its environmental impacts. It enables people to think about it, perhaps have a conversation about it. The important part of a public comment period, though, is written comments on the environmental impact report because per state law, any written comment received during this period of time will be responded to in writing. And with that, I want to turn it over to our consultant and she'll run you through the various aspects of this process and the project. So, really pleased, thank you so much for coming tonight. Oh, John, you wanted to, oh, sorry, you wanted to go first?
Yeah.
Do we? All right, is that? It's yours?
That's actually Janice's.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jana Wallagorski with First Carbon Solutions and I'm helping the city with preparation of the EIR for the Commerce 220 project. Here we just have our introduction slide here. We heard from Brent, William He is our senior planner, he's not here today. Myself, I introduced, Maddie Dolan is our project manager, and then we also have the applicant, John Wodas, here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is John Wodas from Stravinsky Development Group and I represent the applicant, SDG Commerce 220. As some of you may know, we have been here before. The SDG Commerce 220 project development is our 12th project in American Canyon that came before the Planning Commission dating back to our first project in 1995 for Mazetta Foods, which was roughly 30 years ago. Since then, we've developed over 2.5 million square feet of refrigerated food-grade facilities in the Green Island Industrial District. These buildings are home to wineries such as Hess Collection, Mum, Chocolate Processor Barry Calibot, wine bottling operations by Infinity Bottling, direct-to-consumer wine distributors like Wine Direct, Vinfilment, and Last Bottle Wines, value-added operations such as VinPac and G3 Enterprises, specialized operations for Harlan Estate Winery, Bousset Collection, along with secure and protected long-term storage for over 1,000 west coast wineries by Valley Wine Warehouse and Western Wine Services and others. Because we continue to own more than 60% of what we've constructed, we are intimately involved in the market and understand the market forces that would lead to development of one type of project versus another. And since we also own and operate, some of our major tenants were fully aware and deal with every day such issues as workforce, availability, housing, traffic congestion, commute times, et cetera. With a 30-year track record in American Canyon, we've learned that what works well for the market as well as what works well for the city and its residents. The SDG Commerce 220 project is really no different than anything that we've presented in the past. The proposed facility is a 219,834-square-foot refrigerated food-grade warehouse and distribution facility suitable for the storage and distribution of wine and wine-related activities. The project site is essentially an infill lot sandwiched between our two existing buildings of similar size and characteristics. The construction of the road, Commerce Court, the parcelization of the road, and the three lots and the development of our two adjacent buildings have all undergone the full environmental review and procedural approvals of the Planning Commission and City Council. We look forward to making a full presentation before the Commission in the near future. With that, I'd just like to hand everything back over to Jana. Thank you.
All right, so I'll run you through some of the project information and speak directly about the draft EIR. So here's a general location map for you to see, you can see we're on the west side of the city. Here's a map showing existing conditions. This is an outdated aerial, the Commerce 217 site to the north has actually been developed, so the project site is actually sandwiched between two existing warehouses. The project site is 10.45 acres, like I said, it's adjacent to the Commerce 330 and Commerce 217 warehouses' facilities. It's within the American Canyon city limits, it's designated by the general plan as commercial recreation, it's zoned as recreation, and it's in the Napa County Airport land use compatibility plan. I will make note here that the city, within the zoning code, the recreation zone allows winery-related facilities and that's what this warehouse is, it's for wine storage and distribution. A little bit of project history, and these are the three sites again. You can see in this one the aerial is updated and it shows the building to the north. It was a eucalyptus grove from about 1950 to 2012, eucalyptus are not native to the area. The full 35 acres was divided into three lots and now we're here with the remaining lot and looking to develop that. We have some existing conditions photos for you, here we're looking along the north property line to the west and you can see the Commerce 217 building to the right. And here we're looking around the south, along the south property line and the Commerce 330 facility is on the left there. You can't see the building, but it's just past the parking lot there on the left. So I'll give you a little primer on environmental review. CEQA, or the California Environmental Quality Act, applies to projects that require discretionary approval from state or local agencies. This project requires discretionary approval from the city of American Canyon, that makes them the lead agency and they are overseeing the preparation of the EIR. An EIR is the highest level of CEQA review. It provides impartial, informal, it's impartial, I'm sorry, it's impartial informational document that identifies mitigation measures where needed, where impacts have been identified. Here's an overview of our CEQA process so far. As you can see in the top row, we have gone through these items first. We prepared a notice of preparation, circulated it. We went through a 30-day scoping period where we collected comments on what should be addressed and scoped in the EIR. We completed our analysis and we published a draft EIR on June 11th. We are now in the public comment period. Under CEQA, that's required to be 45 days, however, we have a 52-day review period, it's ending this Friday the 2nd. During this time, we collect public comments in written form. During this time, we collect public comments in written form, and those will be included and responded to in the final EIR. Those responses, any changes to the draft EIR and the draft EIR together, create the final EIR that will be put forth to the Planning Commission and City Council for approval and certification. So after publication of the final EIR, the next steps are a public hearing with the PC and CC, and then finally certification of the EIR and approval of the project, should that be the decision made. Little content summary for you of the draft EIR. We have a project description, which describes the proposed projects and the objectives, and discretionary approvals required for it to move forward. It consists of 14 topical sections. It addresses cumulative effects for each of those topical sections. It also includes alternatives. There is a no-project alternative and a reduce-project alternative. There is also an alternative location alternative considered, however, it was considered infeasible. And then there are technical appendices to support the analyses within the document. Here are those 14 analysis topics. I won't read through them, but that's a quick summary list of what's in the draft EIR. Now I'll talk a little bit about the key conclusions. Overall, the draft EIR did not conclude that there were any significant unavoidable impacts with the exception of transportation. We'll get to that in a minute. We have less than significant impacts regarding air quality and biological resources. However, mitigation measures were needed for both of those impact areas to make sure potential impacts are reduced to less than significant successfully. There were less than significant impacts regarding GHG impacts, and no mitigation measures were needed there. The project is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. And as I mentioned earlier, there was a significant unavoidable impact determined in relation to transportation as in respect to vehicle miles traveled or VMT. This is a, it's a result of the city's VMT policy, which requires a 19% vehicle miles traveled or trip reduction for each project. When looking at this project because of its location, it is infeasible and not possible to reach that reduction. So even with a mitigation measure that requires transportation demand management measures to be put in place, it was not possible to reach that 19% reduction. So therefore, we have a significant unavoidable impact after mitigation, and that will require decision-makers to adopt a statement of overriding considerations when you go to certify the So we're almost through to the end of our public comment period. If anybody in the public would like to, or anyone would like to make comments, we encourage you that you focus on the analysis within the draft EIR, not the project merits. The purpose of the public comments is to hear and address items within the draft EIR. Comments should be provided to the City of American Canyon in written form. There is a web form and a letter, or you can write mail and a letter, and I'll show you where you can do that here in a second. And all written comments will be included and responded to in the final EIR. Comments are due by 5 o'clock on the 2nd this Friday. There's two ways to submit them. You can go to a link on the website here. This QR code will also lead you there to a web form to fill out to submit a comment, or you can submit hard copy comments to address here. Next steps, the end of the public comment period is the 2nd, as I said. We will plan on publishing the final EIR in this fall, and that will occur at least 10 days prior to public hearing on the document, so there's time to review the responses. And then there will be public hearings for the certification of the EIR in consideration of project approval. And the timing of that will be determined based on when that can be scheduled and when the final EIR comes out. So with that, I'm willing to take any questions. And then just a reminder that oral comments received at this meeting will not be included in the EIR. To include comments in the EIR, we ask that they are submitted in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, what are your questions? At this time, I open the public comments.
Okay, and we have Yvonne Baginsky.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Baginsky again. So back in February, we went out and took a look at that piece of property that was sandwiched between the two buildings, and we thought we had made a mistake because there were cars parked all over it, and it was used as a parking lot for the laborers who were working in the other two buildings. And there's also a small wetlands on that property, and it has an orange fence surrounding it. And I was very surprised to hear that it had been graded and the trees had been removed back in 2012. And I didn't know, I mean, it's my own ignorance, I didn't know that they could, anybody can do that, they can go in and grade and then apply for an EIR, because there's nothing to really comment on. So when I read the EIR, I thought, you know, we don't know what wildlife, we don't know what resources were on that land. Everything's been cleared. And so I would ask the developer, in lieu of all this, to please consider restoring and replacing some of the things that were removed, especially in non-functional areas around the building. So I wrote an extensive list of things that could be done, trees that could be planted, natives that could be done, pollinator plants that could go in, special kind of grading, how the wetlands will be protected. And I'm asking the developer to please consider this in lieu of the fact that everything has been destroyed that was on that property. And it does go right up against the edge of the north slough. It goes right up against the, there's another field to the right. In February, when I walked in the wetlands area on the other side of those eucalyptus trees were monarch butterflies, and so my concern was, where are these butterflies coming from? Well, I learned that there's a possibility that there's a roosting area for monarch butterflies in those eucalyptus trees, which is very possible because the nearest roosting site is at Mare Island, which is seven miles from here. And I talked with a biologist, and he said it's very, very possible that the butterflies have started roosting, because I said out of nowhere, there were 30 monarch butterflies. And when I put it on next door, people started responding with pictures of the butterflies they had seen, and this was in February. So my question is, is there some way we can restore that area and actually encourage that area to have a better wildlife habitat for the animals after what has all been stripped? And that's what I ask of the developer. I realize that they can't make the transportation mitigation work, and maybe they can do this instead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yvonne. Are there any other comments?
Anyway, maybe you can hear me. I just wanted to see where that location is. In my mind, I can't picture it. It was just by.
So I'll show you the more regional picture here on the screen, so you can see the black dot is where the project site is. If you, I don't know the road names off the top of my head, maybe you know the road from Green Island Road. Yeah. And then you turn south.
Yep. You turn down Green Island Road.
And then you turn south on Commerce Boulevard.
Fran.
I can't visualize where it is.
Fran, it's kind of across the street from Paintball Jungle.
It's across the street from Paintball Jungle. You know, Commerce Court has a cul-de-sac now, and there's a bike trail that leads down to the elementary school.
Oh, it's by the paintball?
Yes.
Okay. It was not near the other three buildings, cross street from. The other three buildings that are in that.
Yeah, there are two warehouses now on the west side of Commerce Court, across the street from there. It's on the, on the west side, there's an empty lot in between two buildings.
I didn't visualize where it was. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Fran. Are there any other comments, in person or in Zoom?
If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. There are no additional public comments. Chair Cruz.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, I call this item closed for public comments, and I consider this order of business received and filed. Before we move on to public hearings, move on to consent calendar that we kind of missed, I'd like to announce consent calendar and entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Aye.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Aye.
Chair Brando Cruz.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crystal Malari is absent.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving on to public hearings, Oat Hill Multifamily Residential Major Modifications. Director Cooper.
Thank you, Chair Cruz, Planning Commission, and members of the public. Brent Cooper commuted on director. Pleased to present to you a change to a project that's under construction today, and this is known as the Oat Hill Multifamily Residential Project. Just behind City Hall here to the west is east side of Oat Hill. It's about 20 acres altogether, and it was approved by the City Council in 2020, 2021, for 219, 209 homes, and it's on two parcels within the hillside. At the time, it was a very extensive review process. The general plan designated the site as industrial with a commercial overlay, and so the general plan and the zoning was amended to high and medium density residential. Along with that came a design permit for construction of the apartments, and as well, there was a subdivision map for both of the two different tiers as well. Each of the apartment sites each have their own recreation, leasing building, swimming pool, and so on. And so at the time, there was an environmental review, was a mitigated negative declaration. The Planning Commission reviewed that. It was approved by the City Council. But I mentioned, too, there was quite a few approvals that went to the Planning Commission to address all these different components to the project. I mentioned that there are two tiers, upper and lower. They're referred to as parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A is the upper one, and as you can see, grading activities happening up there today. That one has 206 units in 13 three-story buildings. And as well, up on top of Oat Hill, it has sweeping views of Napa Valley all the way to San Francisco and to the east here with our open space reserve. And as part of that approval, it includes an easement for public access to enjoy the view around the developed part of this upper tier parcel, and that continues to be part of the project. The lower tier is 85 units in five three-story buildings, much like the ones above, but fewer in number, and it has a, two has a leasing recreation building and a swimming pool. Even though it's a lower tier, the views from there are actually still very good. And here's just some before and after pictures that went with that original approval, showing photo simulations of what the project would look like from certain vantage points. This is from Highway 29 from what we refer to as the Fran Lemos Bridge over the railroad. And as you gaze to the right, you can see the hillside there, and here's, the lower picture here is a photo simulation of the two different tiers of the apartments, and landscaping in between on the steep slope and around the project. Here's another vantage point from right over here at Napa Junction Road and Highway 29. As you look west towards the project, you can see the two different tiers and landscaping that would come with the project. The architecture for the building is farmhouse style. It includes tile concrete roof, has a pitched roof. Board and batten is a feature on the third floor in portions of that. Has recessed patios and decks. It has three different color schemes with three colors per scheme. So there's a lot of variation in the way buildings look and feel. There are two different building sizes, an 17 unit and a 12 unit. Here's an image of the 12-unit building. I mentioned the landscaping that was shown on the photo simulations. Here's a depiction of that in plan view for the upper parcel, and then again, the lower one. The steep slope in between, you can see, has various trees that are planted there that are evergreen, and inside the project is more ornamental, smaller scale deciduous, mostly trees. There's also trees planted along the frontage for Napa Junction Road. Those are crepe myrtles that you'll see around town that are blooming up a storm this time of year. Since the original approval, this project's had an unusual, unusually large number of modification requests, and kind of list them here. I won't read them all, but you can kind of get a sense, there's been a variety of aspects of the project related to grading and the building architecture and the like. And so those have kind of happened in different stages. There was an initial modification request in 2022, and then I'd say different scales of changes proposed since then in 2023, and then several in 2024. And that's really kind of what the issue is here to talk about tonight. So if you're kind of wondering why we've assembled tonight to talk about this, in general, kind of the way in which American Canyon works in many other cities in California, the entitlement process that comes with the Planning Commission is very rigorous. We just talked tonight about the environmental impact report for a warehouse, which is a very rigorous environmental review. This one had a similar one for a negative declaration. But we also take great care in the preliminary grading plans, utility plans, architecture. So when the project comes to the Planning Commission and the City Council, if they're the approval authority, there's confidence that this has been very well considered and thought through, and that when we bring something to you, this is something that's real. It's just not, just not sort of something that is a maybe. I remember many years ago being on an interview panel from a planner in Las Vegas, and they talked a lot about bringing things through a review process in just a matter of weeks. But what happens after that, because it's so poorly or lightly evaluated, the construction process, that's where you really understand what you're doing. But what happens in the construction process is that follows after the public process. So in the reverse than the way we do things, you know, you find out what you're getting once the public process is over with, and that's really not kind of the way that we do business. So we do this very detailed environmental and entitlement process to bring to you a project that we know has technical feasibility. And so once that's approved, that's kind of what the public expects. I know that we have our regular folks here, but others as well, both here and online, and they come and see these projects, and they're expecting, once it's approved, that's what they'll see. The zoning code does, though, understand that there could be small changes, feasibility issues that you really don't necessarily know until you really get in. And this project may be unique in that sense because it's such a steep hillside with earthquake faults, and then when you're grading, you know, you never quite know what you'll be facing until you get going. So that certainly is understandable, that there could be changes just based upon the field conditions that wouldn't be understandable until you actually get in and see what you've got to work with. And so that was really accommodated largely through that first amendment that was proposed by the project proponent, Rick Hess, in 2022. Since that time, the project has been sold, and we've seen subsequent changes that were proposed for the project. And what we found that is, I would say unprecedented, is the sort of the fluid nature of some of those project changes. They have been proposed through different modification requests, and as we look very closely at these very complicated construction documents, we've seen footnotes that are kind of unclear, and there have been other changes that have been inserted into them. I mean, it's just, they've just sort of been happening. I think there's a communication back and forth that's needed, but the fact is that there have been a lot of changes that sort of found their way into construction documents and really haven't been presented upfront as you might do through a formal modification process. All of that isn't necessarily a bad thing, but the consequence is, is the current project as it's proposed is sufficiently different than what was presented to the public and approved by the council that it meets the threshold for a major modification. That's not a bad thing. It just means that it's time to bring it back up, let people take a look at it, see what they think, provide their input, and kind of take it from there. Having said all of that, I kind of want to run you some of the modifications that staff has flagged. Some of these have come Some of these have come through specific changes and others have found their way into construction documents that really weren't presented when it went to the city council and planning commission in twenty twenty-one. So I'll try not to take too much time, but I'll kind of run through. Some of them are technical, some are, you know, will you decide what's important, what isn't. Just immediately south on the upper tier, below the water tank on Oat Hill, is a retaining wall called a soil nail wall. That's a particular technology of wall construction. What was missing from the construction documents and the style of wall wasn't really clearly identified in the original approval, is the finish coat. The applicant, upon being made aware that we don't have a finish coat identified, brought this to our attention. Staff thinks it's attractive. The wall is hidden by taller buildings. And so this is one that is, wasn't initially part of the project. We can understand why it's there. I think the solution is attractive. And so I'll move on to the next one. There is another form of wall that it will be proposed. It's on the edge of the upper tier. So there's kind of a flat pad and then there's a slope that goes down to the parcel B. At the top of parcel A, right at the edge there, will be four individual retaining walls. And those are made of concrete block called CMU. There is a similar one already constructed in the lower one. And so we brought that to the applicant's attention and I'll get to that in a minute. But this upper wall here, this appeared in improvement plans, which is reviewed by Public Works. And it would be about six feet tall. And so we talked to the applicant and they've agreed to add a texture coat paint that's kind of beige or taupe, similar color. There's a southern wall that's down, way down here in the right-hand corner that the applicant believes wouldn't be visible really from any meaningful vantage point. And so unlike the other walls, which would also have landscaping, it's proposed this one not have that landscaping. So I'll move on. Now with the lower tier, the parcel B, it too has a retaining wall up against that steep slope on Oat Hill. This one is constructed with mechanically stabilized earth wall, another different technology. This one is approximately equal in height to what was anticipated. Or it's, actually it's a little taller than what was anticipated. The treatment there shown on the lower right here is, I think it's attractive. Brick looking finish on that. And so the wall is well under construction today. And it's also will be hidden by tall buildings. So while it isn't, wasn't contemplated just in this way initially, I think the solutions that are there are attractive and necessary given it's holding up an enormous hill. I mentioned too, that the lower parcel B has a block wall as well for retaining. This one was constructed already. And the applicants agreed to paint that with a weatherproof paint and landscaping. So that would be a modification to the project. But I think under the site conditions, it would be appropriate. In twenty twenty-two, as the grading plans were under development, Rick Hess noted that the steepness of the slope between A and B is going to be flattened a bit. And what happened is it compressed the pad area for parcel B. So it had a wider area for apartments before. When you lay the slope down, it kind of took some of that, some of that spot. So as a consequence, the buildings envelopes that were proposed under the council approval were changed and modified a little bit. And I know you can't, you really can't see what the differences are on this graphic. But if you look very, very closely, if you had a copy, in red underlining is the footprint of what was the original approval. And they're very, very closely aligned. There's not a lot of difference between the two. It's a little different in the parcel B because part of the slope between the two pads spread into parcel B. So if you, if you could see it, there is a very faint line that shows some of the original buildings extended further west than is possible now. And so some of the buildings that are proposed today are a little shorter, not as long. Overall, the square footage between the council approval and what's proposed today is about nine square feet. So there's just a negligible difference in overall building area and the new pads and the building footprints reflect what is possible given the geological conditions that that hill presents the developer. So that seemed okay. The building architecture, once the buildings themselves changed, changed a little bit. And so we initially had fifteen, a twelve-plex and a seventeen-plex. Now we have a fifteen-plex and an eighteen-plex. So the, just the buildings are, themselves are holding a different number of units. Perhaps the size of the units changed a little bit. But the architecture is similar. They both have pitched roofs, recessed balconies and decks. The form of enhancement on the upper floor, which is a board and batten, which is a kind of a vertical style, was changed to a lap siding, which is horizontal. But they're both similar enhancements. If I could divert for a minute in Watson Ranch, where we have single-family homes that are adjacent to streets and publicways and trails, we require those homes to have, I don't know if it's fiberboard or if it's wood, but a similar looking treatment because it's more attractive. So where you have highly visible locations in Watson Ranch, for example, that's a requirement that we implement in that area of town. Of course, this is a different area and there's different buildings. But the point is that the part of the exterior cladding that makes it more interesting was retained, albeit in and rather than vertical, it was horizontal. And the color changes were amended as well. The proposal at the time was the original colors are very muted in earth tone. Not alike what you'd see around here, but perhaps a more, a more modern interpretation would be a little more bold or color palette. Different people might like the old or they might like the new. It's really a personal taste issue. The building materials themselves changed from, as the project has been proposed over time, it went from a concrete tile roof, which I'm sure is very expensive, to an asphalt shingle roof. We have asphalt shingle roofs in some of our other apartments, the Village of Vintage Ranch, for example, and Napa Canyon, Canyon Corners, the apartments over there by Dunkin' Donuts. So it has, it has shingle roofs. So that's not an unusual, so it may not be as, it may be as expensive a material, but it's one that we see and around town, and I don't think anybody has an objection to it. There were, as proposed today, there are further changes that the applicants requested. And that would be to remove the lap siding and replace it with stucco. The balance of the body of the buildings had a fiber cement hardy panel. And the proposal is to replace that with stucco. I think in staff's view, the hardy panels for most of the body of the building and stucco are equivalent in appearance. And so that didn't seem to be a significant change from an aesthetic perspective. There is a window shown here with the red arrow that's proposed to be removed. Apparently there was some, I've forgotten the reason, but there, I think it was an acoustic issue. Or there was, there was an issue that caused that to be removed. It doesn't change any of the safety of the building, like an egress window for bedrooms. It doesn't significantly change the appearance of the building. So that seemed minor from staff's perspective. Another change that has been proposed is some of the garage doors to the apartments had windows under the original approval. And the change here is to remove the windows and just have no windows. And so that is an equivalent, there's no sort of practical reason staff would support windows versus no windows. We have other apartments with no windows, so it's, I think, just a preference. So that seems pretty minor. Some of the other buildings on the site include, mention the clubhouse or leasing building. There are also a pool building and maintenance building. The original approval had lap siding, I'm sorry, had board and batten siding for that. We haven't had a modification that's today proposed would be replace the board and batten siding with stucco. And then we've had a variety of colors for this project overall. The ones along the top there are where the original approval colors. And the ones along the bottom are a variety of colors that have been proposed since the project was initially approved. As I mentioned, I think people might have their preferences. But staff doesn't have any, any real basis in which to choose one over another. Just to give you kind of a sense of what some of the other apartments around town. I know renderings don't always do it justice. But it's a convenient resource. In twenty fourteen, the Canyon Ridge Apartments, they have a variety of color, two colors on the body. They have wooden accents. They have lap side, they have board and batten siding. And the Village of Vintage Ranch, it has also two or three colors, different varieties of colors. They have, both have shingles on the roof. It too has wooden accents and, and so you can kind of get a sense there. The Lemos Point Apartments, those are in Watson Ranch. Those are adjacent to the ruins and gardens, which is a very unique architectural feature, which probably calls for a unique building next to it. So it's a very different style than you would see elsewhere in the city, maybe reflecting the more industrial nature of that area of town. That's a hundred percent affordable project, but it has lap siding, it has cultured stone, it has three colors. It has, has a lot of variety just in that project itself. Looking at things very sort of clinically, perhaps numerically. I know that's a very small font for our viewers. But we did a comparison just on if, if numbers make something better. Maybe, maybe like a meal, if you get one, one dish, that might not be so satisfying. But three or four might be a little better. Perhaps with that perspective, we took a look at different apartments in, that have been recently approved and just looked at, well, how many color schemes do they have? How many colors per scheme are there? What kind of exterior features are there? And just, this can give you a sense of, of what we have as a standard around town. As I mentioned, this project was initially approved through California Environmental Equality Act with a mitigated negative declaration. The changes that we see proposed, whatever way they go, we don't think that amends or influences changes, something of those outcomes. So I thought I'd mention that to you. And gosh, I'm just about done. The planning commission, in terms of its capacity as advisory body to the city council, has, this project, as with really any project, has the options to, you can agree with the modifications. You can decide among the modifications, if you agree or not agree with them. You can propose alternatives, modifications. And as always, you can consider continuing the hearing to a later date. So with that, sorry, a bit lengthy presentation, glad to answer any questions.
Thank you Director Cooper. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Director Cooper? How about the applicant, any comments?
The applicant does have a presentation. And I will cue it up.
Okay, perfect. Good evening. My name is Blaze Hilton. I own a company called Russell Square. Me and my partners act as both the developer on the project and I'm also the general contractor on the project. I've been attached to this project since about October of twenty twenty-two, when our group purchased it from Rick Hess. I'm also an engineer by trade. So when Brent speaks of the complexity of this project, he is not joking. As we have began construction and gone through the process, several items have come up that Brent pointed out. We have new walls that need to be included in the project for site stability. And there's just the soil nail wall, there's a variety of items. When you add to that the uncharacteristic amount of rain that we have received from, let's say, late twenty twenty-two, all the way through the beginning of this year, it's been an increasingly difficult process from a cost perspective. So the changes that we are requesting tonight are all cost-based. So as we have added different elements to the project and the budget has overall increased, it's become much more difficult to finish the project unless we take some steps right now in the process to lower our costs. And that's what we're going to go through. So as we look here, some of the major items that we want to change is, as Brent said, we'd like to remove all the lap siding from the project, all the hardy panel. As we went through twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, some inflationary measures took place that has increased the cost of that lap siding. And stucco is a cheaper alternative and we believe it's also a aesthetically pleasing alternative as well. I think it's important to mention that we are not merchant builders, okay? We buy and we own these properties for a lifetime. So the changes that we are making aren't just for cost savings so that we can get out of the project later on and sell it. These are, this is, these are changes that we believe in and we believe enhance the project, but at the same time, it saves a little cash as well. So as you can see here, we're requesting some stucco be put installed throughout the project. We're also adding some ground floor fencing in lieu of the larger stucco concrete walls. That saves us some money, but we also believe that element adds to the aesthetic of the project. This is on the eighteen-plex building. Let's take a look at the next one. We're also recommending a, we also like to do a, some roof changes as well to increase our ceiling height on the third floor. We found that residents enjoy that extra foot of ceiling height on that top floor. And it does not increase the overall building height at all. The building envelope does not change, or the footprint as well. Okay. Similar here to, okay, so as Brandon said before, another change that we're requesting, removing the garage windows and just going with the full panel garage door. The change that Brent was speaking about with regards to the window, that's a mechanical change through the engineering and the design process. We identified that window. I don't know if I can point it out here, but it's the window on the ground floor to the left. There's going to be some mechanical equipment and that, it's just going to be an acoustical nightmare for that resident. So we're going to delete that window, provide a little more insulation in that area. We had a burnt sienna color, as you can see, originally on that fifteen-plex on the top floor. We're going to make the project uniform. Only five buildings on the site had that burnt sienna, so we'd like to take that out and then just go with a consistent color throughout the property to make it more uniform. This is a different elevation here, this is the end of the fifteen-plex buildings. And we can create that panel look with the stucco by putting some edging in there as well. So that we're not overall changing the aesthetic too much, but we are, we are being able to substitute a different material in there. This is the fifteen-plex again with the garage doors, as you can see, with the windows removed. And this is our final building colors, both roof shingles and building colors. We're actually going to go with the blue on the left for that body color. And the black and the gray and the white. I believe this is our second scheme here. I believe this is our second scheme here. Some data info. Clubhouse elevations, we are going to get rid of the board and batten or propose to get rid of the board and batten in lieu of stucco. Again, it's the hardy panels that are kind of eating into our budget right now. Same same on the second clubhouse, taking out the board and batten look and replacing that with stucco as well. Different elevation here on the clubhouse. Pool house, same thing. We're going to remove the board and batten and replace with stucco. Different elevation here. Maintenance building. Making the project consistent, building to building, removing and changing some materials. And that's really all I had to speak about, but I'm happy to ask, answer questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, what are your questions for the applicant? Commissioners off.
So let me turn on the mic and kind of go from there.
Let's do it.
I appreciate you giving a little bit about your background. I'll give you a quick bit on my background. I am a surety bond underwriter. So I have dealt with construction for literally 40 years at this point, since I've been in the business for 40 years. So I I get a lot of changes and cost factors and I am well aware of the impacts that COVID had on supply chain and that a lot of those are still not fully back to normal. They have certainly improved since the height of COVID, but there are still issues, long lead times, particularly on some specialty mechanical and electrical items, you know. So you're not talking, at least with me, with somebody who, oh, construction, what is that? So I, and that's why I wanted to give you a little bit of background. My first question for you is. And it may sound weird, but have you discussed these changes with the prior owner, with Mr. Hess, with Rick Hess at all? And has he given you any thoughts on them?
No, we have not, since Rick has exited the project, no.
Okay, and 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 to be expected and fair enough. And part of why I was asking that is Rick is a local, kind of understands the history of the property and kind of what in general, I think, the Oat Hill property represents for American Canyon. That you as a newcomer and not, you know, being resident local and so on, you're not familiar with it, and that's understandable. Development on Oat Hill had been proposed on a variety of different occasions going way back, and it sort of never went anywhere for a variety of reasons. And different types of concepts were were considered. Restaurant at one point was going to be at the top of the hill and, you know. What Oat Hill represents locally is amazing views. It has some of the best views in American Canyon, in the county of Napa, for that matter. With the view to the west of Marin, up high over the wetlands, you can see out to Mount Tam and pretty much all of Marin. You can look north, you know, deeper into Napa County and and, you know, have some amazing views likewise, east, south, or whatever direction. As a result, the initial proposal seemed to kind of carry, and I think it's part of why the, both the commission and the council ultimately kind of went ahead and with the approvals is it kind of was a and it's kind of hard to say this, but it was kind of a higher quality look in terms of an apartment complex. And I think that was one of the things that was appreciated. And that's that's one of the things that I think Rick Hess understood that, hey, we need to make this thing look good because it's visible from Highway 29 and it is a spot that we want to attract and kind of, I'll say, upscale the perceptions of American Canyon with. So with that kind of backdrop, I understand the changes, I understand cost savings. I think some of the changes are probably fine. I think some of the things, as as Director Cooper mentioned, were necessary and appreciated in terms of, you know, yes, you need you need the stabilization walls, it's important, don't need the hill sliding. But I think for me at least, when I look at the total, as you kind of just, you know, put up, it just, the proposal, as you're coming with it, doesn't carry that same classy looking, upper scale type of facility. So my question for you is, I understand looking to bring costs down, and I'm open to that. Are there further modifications that you can make that would maybe not give you all of the cost savings, but give you some and yet would restore some of that more elegant, I'll say, look to the to the property?
Well, I think my first question would be, what are you considering elegant? That's that's very, we're talking very subjectively here because we're talking about design, right? So in putting this together, the the thought process was, how can we maintain the existing look or the the original look? And what we're talking about is, you know, those hardy panels, correct? How can we do that in a way that translates to cheaper costs but maintains the look? And the stucco with, you know, carving in the edge lines to mirror the hardy panel, board and batten, the look is going to be extremely similar, and I believe staff also agreed with us during the minor modification process as well.
I think on the lower two floors, I would probably tend to agree, especially if you do, you know, as you indicated, where you can create more of that
Correct.
hardy panel look, that that would be a help rather than it just being sort of a blank wall.
Yep.
I think it's more of the stuff, for me at least, on the third floor.
Lapsite.
The the initial window issue, when I first kind of read about it, I was like, why the heck are you removing? Your explanation, the acoustics, it's mechanical room right next door. I'm kind of like, okay, I get that, that makes sense. And while I would prefer to have, and I don't know if you can do a full window outside in some fashion, blacked out or whatnot, just to, because I think it helps to balance the building look
Okay.
better if you do something like that. Just a personal thing. My fellow commissioners may totally disagree, but the the thinking that I have is it's more that third floor, because again, that's more of what you're going to see. I understand, hey, only dealing with two paint colors is less expensive than dealing with three paint colors and so on. But I do think some of the variance that is added by having that third paint color does give more of a interesting and unique look to the project. So so these are the things that I'd ask you to kind of think about and consider.
I think on the third floor, we were actually researching this today. We may be able, and I'm, don't hold me to this, but we're looking into it. But we may be able to create that lap siding look with the use of a stucco foam. So that's something we're looking into right now that could both save us costs but also maintain the aesthetic. And with regards to the the color variations, we can talk about that internally on our side as we continue this process. But it's one of those things that it's very, you know, it's it's subjective again. So it's like maintaining what some folks would say is elegant, while we might not disagree. We might say for this product type and for the more upscale folks that we're looking to rent to, they might prefer what we're proposing as well. So it's it's one of those design questions that's like, what do we do here or there? We're open and, you know, I think we've got a pretty good working relationship right now with the city. So we're open to having that continued dialogue with regards to the paint colors on those five buildings that we're talking about changing with that burnt sienna look. And we can put some proposals together.
Okay. I appreciate, you know, the 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 feedback and and the conversation. I think that one of the bigger pieces that I want to go back to was one of the things that Brent had mentioned in terms of our process, and I don't know where else you've built and whatnot, but our process really is kind of come to us with the finished proposal because we need public input. Because this is not just a decision that we are making as a planning commission, but when we when we have a significant number, and and, you know, again, I'll I'll mention this just real clear. If there were one or two items, their minor modification, see, staff would have taken care of it and so on. There is a fairly large, I couldn't count, number of modifications that are being requested. In our conversation here, there's been talk about, eh, we'll consider that, let's let's see and maybe make some additional modifications. What I would encourage is finalize the plan and then come back with a complete, this is what we're proposing, this is the, you know, the full set of modifications that that we would like to make. Because that way we can put it out for, you know, we can notice it so that public can be here to kind of get, give their input on the changes.
Well, I believe that's what we're doing, right? This is our final plan that we're presenting to you, correct?
Well.
And now we're having an open conversation about different things that we might change based off of your feedback. So I might be a little confused at what you're asking.
So I, okay, I mean, I I I don't recall, and maybe I missed it, but you talked about fence instead of something else in front of. Was that in? I I saw it, I mean, I, you know, I, it's, but was that in the information previously, like, when did, when did, was that proposed? When did that come up? Because I don't recall seeing that, and I I may have missed it when I looked through the, you know, packet.
When did you receive the packet?
What was it? Thursday or Friday of last week, I think?
We published on Friday of last week.
I believe we added in, or correct? So it might not have made it to the packet in time, for that I apologize. But it's, we have a biweekly or a bi-monthly meeting with the city every Tuesday. And we kind of talk through these ideas and what we're thinking about. So that's been proposed for a while now, I believe, at least in the last six months.
Okay, I again, do you, I'm going to ask, do you guys recall seeing? Okay, so I'm not totally crazy, partly, but not totally. So I mean, it it it's stuff like that and and, you know, I haven't gone through everything, so I'll at this point, it was kind of some of the stuff that I wanted to hit. I'll kind of kick it over to my cohorts. But I I appreciate and I and I do think, you know, that we need to think and make sure that we've got everything kind of covered. So hope you appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your explanations to the questions so far. Part of my concern also mimics a little bit about what was approached is really the transition into the stucco. I just think that transition gives it a little less of a visual appeal than what was designed originally with all the panels and all that. It gave it a little bit more texture to it. And I know you can mimic some of that in stucco now. But I think that really changes the aesthetic view of the buildings themselves. So that's a little bit of concern for me. I understand, I don't know what the cost variance is, you're going from from one material to the other material and what that cost savings are. But it's definitely going to have a little bit of a visual appeal impact on the buildings themselves. The color scheme doesn't bother me as much. It's a pretty minor change, and I still like the colors that were proposed. You know, I think of these from two different aspects. I think of them from what we see when we're down here looking up and what we see when we're in the parking lots themselves, very close to the buildings. I really agree with Commissioner Altman about the third floor texturing. The boards either horizontal or vertical, whichever way they were going. I like that aspect of it because it does break up all that components in the different levels of the building. Color does that as well. I really like the fact that you're removing windows from garage doors and unifying the garage doors. Don't think I know why there were windows in garage doors. I understand a little bit about it, but it, in a single family home, that's one thing. But in a in a community home like this, I really don't think windows in garage doors are a good way of going. I had one question which had nothing to do with any of the proposals that are laid out here in the modifications. And that was about the public access walkway around to the kind of the rear side. I saw that and it's great, and I think it needs to be there because it is, as mentioned here, there's just such a fantastic view from the backside of that hill, looking at all the sunsets and looking out over the wetlands. The view to the east is is equally as great for sunrises. I look at that walkway around and I see it coming out to kind of a little point area with maybe possibility of bench or two there. There are times where there's going to be a lot of people taking advantage of that viewpoint. Sunset is going to be there almost every single day. And there are other times when the city celebration, Fourth of July, whatever, they're going to get a lot of people coming back into there. And I just hope you guys have considered that. It's not really going to be a one person or two piece and walking their dog. There's going to be times where there's 30 or 40 people lined up on there for the sunsets, definitely. I used to go up there for sunsets all the time, but also for anything that's going on astronomically, anything that's going on with fireworks or anything like that in the city. That's just a key observation point for our community, looking out over the nature and over the wetlands. So I would think about that. What I saw there, I was uncertain on how that path ends, if there's enough room back there. I really like the textures on the retaining walls. I think that needed to be done and designed. I like what you came up with. I think both of those are well done as well. My big question is really around, because as you mentioned, this is cost savings. I don't have a good indication of what that savings value is to you and why those changes, what that equates to for you when it comes to cost. That's my big question around it. And then my other question is, is where we're at now kind of where we're going to remain when it comes to all these aesthetic changes? It's not going to be okay another week or two weeks down the road or none of them down the road that, okay, this wall needs to be changed for aesthetic values and cost savings management. So that's part of it as well. Do you foresee continual changes?
To answer your question, no. This is, we have to pick a plan and stick to it because we don't want to have to come back in front of you folks again, obviously. But also, you know, we're we're on time clock right now with the bank, obviously, just like any developer. So it's important that, and I appreciate Brent, you know, putting all of this into a major modification. It has kind of come in, you know, one after the other as we've started to see some some costs and scope creep through it. I can put dollar amounts to each item, but we are talking in the millions of dollars for these changes. And as we look to balance our budget, you know, that equates to a building or two on parcel A. So as we try and figure out how we're going to finish the project and get to the to the goal line, right? These changes that we're talking about aren't saving us, you know, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands. They're talking, we're talking about, you know, full buildings worth of getting finished. Completely agree with the, let's not come back two weeks from now and say, you know what, we're going to put lime green up here now. No, absolutely not. This is what we want, this is our plan, this is what we want to stick to, and we hope to do it with you guys' support.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for doing this for the City of American Canyon.
Of course.
I was not on the planning commission in 2021, or, yeah, 2021, so this is new to me as well as it is to you. I do like the farmhouse architecture, you know, because that's the theme of our City of American Canyon. I don't want the buildings to look institutionalized, I want them to look pretty, if that makes any sense, and again, that's subjective. With it being on top of the hill, it's going to be like the crown jewel, it's not going to be hidden like the canyon apartments, canyon oaks, canyon ridge by Walmart, so I want to make sure that it's done right and it's done aesthetically pleasing to the eye. It's going to represent the City of American Canyon, you can see it driving down 29. I do like the changes that you've suggested. My question is, the stucco for the fiber cement lap, is that the hardy? Is that...
The lap is the hardy, so that's the fiber cement, lap siding is the hardy material.
And so the stucco is going to look like...
It's going to look very similar to the lap, to the panel, hardy panel, so the hardy panel comes in multiple products, but for this project, it's a lap siding, which is hardy, and it's also a panel product, which is four-by-eight sheets that's put up on the wall and then some transition pieces in between them. We're looking to mimic that look just with the use of stucco.
Do you have a picture of it, what it looks like?
Well, just what we have here, like a real-life picture of it, not in the presentation, unfortunately.
Okay, okay. I just, again, don't want it to look institutionalized or...
Understood.
And then I appreciate what you're doing with the retaining walls, because, you know, you had to do the rebar and all that, we want to make sure the hillside's stable.
Oh, yeah, can't have the buildings, can't have the buildings moving on us.
No, please. And place stucco, do you think that's good?
Thank you.
Again, thank you for the presentation. I don't have the same background as Commissioner Altman and Goff and even Commissioner Mohammed, but what I am seeing today is several, several modifications. Are you coming from a panel here where you're asking us to make a decision right here and now on the modification that you proposed, and I don't think that's fair with, given an hour that we just looked at this, the material that you suggested. I think it's beautiful, I think it's wonderful, as American Canyon residents, we want the aesthetics and the beauty of it all. Now, you did mention that you may be able to change some sidings or add something to the buildings that makes it aesthetically pleasing, but what we want to guess, what we're asking is, okay, when you're ready to give us a bow and package of this presentation, then let's do that. Right now, there's too many changes right now, it's too fluid right now for us to make a decision like, okay, let's go ahead and approve this modification, we don't even, I've looked at this for 30, 40 minutes, I don't, I need to really digest everything that you presented to us, if that makes any sense.
As it was explained to me, I wasn't expecting a decision tonight. I believe it was at least a month away, and this was kind of an introduction to the changes, correct? Maybe I'm misunderstanding the process here. Wasn't looking for an approval tonight, I don't think we were expecting anything until the end of August, I believe, to give everyone a time to digest all the changes, you know, and then maybe we can reconvene, but again, that's going to be a procedural thing on your, you guys' side, I believe.
And Chair Cruz, if I may, on that matter, as a threshold legal issue right now, we would state that, I believe the presentation was not included in the, this presentation was not included in the public packet, so at this point, due to the due process elements as well as the municipal code, which actually requires the application be submitted describing the narrative, which this presentation now does, it be taken as a continuance of the matter so that the public can adequately digest the information, staff can digest the information, and make sure that compliance with the municipal code also occurs.
Chair Cruz, if I could also add to that, with regard to process, the decision-maker for the major modification is the city council, and the planning commission is an advisory body to the city council, so on its way to the city council, we'll need to have a firm and well-defined project description. The applicants propose some additional measures tonight visually that needs to be incorporated into the larger modification proposal, which we can then bring back for your review. That review needs to be completed before it goes to the next step of providing your recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Director Cooper, and thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I just have some clarification. When the, some of the buildings changed, some of the buildings because of the incline on the hill, was there units lost in that? Because we were talking about, buildings went from 17 to 12 or 15 to 12.
Commissioner Goff, there was, yeah, there were no units lost.
No units lost?
No.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further comments from the commission, I open it to public comment.
Is there anyone in person that would like to speak? Beth Marcus, please, come speak.
Yes, good evening. It's a shame nobody ever comes out to these meetings, it really irritates me because you hear in the community all the time that people are concerned about it being built on the hillside, slippage, there's constantly modifications going on, it makes you wonder, is this really the type of project that needs to be there? Commissioner Altman talked about Rick and what he, you know, he knows about the property and what should be there and what he had planned and everything. It seems like, don't get this wrong, seems like we never get anything right. I don't mean not to be disrespectful, it seems like, like Fran and I come to these meetings all the time, and we see all these presentations, it's going to look like this, going to look like this, and it never looks like what it turns out to be, and I hate to keep harping on it, but Napa Cove is a pet peeve of mine, I mean, it looks like a jailhouse to me. There's no, we want beautification here on our highways, but I don't, I don't see the beautification coming. And again, like I said, I'm just concerned because a lot of people are always talking about it, it may be safe, I don't know, but we know about the, when it rains, slippage, it just doesn't look like it's, I don't know what I'm looking for, but safe or whatever, I don't know, but I, we just wonder, is that the right kind of project to be there? That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Any other comments?
Is there anyone else in person? Oh, Fran.
Fran Levis. It's a nice project, and I think it's going to be beautiful when it's finished. The view up there is spectacular, and they're coming up, the apartments down below are coming up fast. The only thing I have a problem with is, for like seven weeks now, these trucks go past my house, three, four, five, and I don't mind them at all, except now it's getting dry, and when they go through, they leave a little cloud of dust, and I have never seen anybody with a water truck go down there. Don't you guys kind of have to do that? Water the road if there's dust, because it is affecting my throat. It's a good project, and I'll be glad when it's finished, so we can see the results of it. I like the fact that they have a walkway around it so people can go up and see the view. I agree with Beth with that apartment at Napa Cove, it's ugly, sorry to say that. I don't remember seeing any beautiful plans like these, but it's the way it is, it's our city, and we want to thank you guys for keeping everybody with questions and answers and making sure that we come out with a nice project. So I'm looking forward to that project being finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Okay. We also have Nelia Maderos on Zoom. I am going to ask Nelia to unmute herself, just bear with me for one second, please. Nelia, please speak. You're, you're very fuzzy. Nelia, we're having a really hard time hearing you. I am going to mute you and move on to Karen Fritz, and then we will try you again momentarily. Karen Fritz, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself.
I would just like to piggyback on what Beth said, I think she has some very good points. You know, it is a, it's a massive project to be up there on that hill, I've been watching them...
Can you hear me?
I'm going to mute you because we couldn't hear you, and then we'll come back to you. Karen, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I understand, we're having some technical difficulty, but as Beth was saying, you know, the concern is like with, you know, the heavy rains like we've had the last couple of years, and I've watched them grade that hill, I've got pictures from the time they started to where they're at today, and, you know, it, they are huge, those are, they're very big complexes, and a very big concern would be for slides, you know, in that area. I'm not sure how we'd do that, you know, with the grading and the dirt and all that kind of stuff, you know, but that would be a concern, and I agree with Commissioner Altman and Mr. Goff about the aesthetics of the development. It does not look like the original plan, so I do think that's something that needs to truly be considered, as well as, I was looking at all the landscaping, they said evergreen trees, and then ornamental trees, I would just like to say, since I walk every day, I think trees should be at minimum 10 feet away from a walking path due to all the debris that they drop. I know, I know they're pretty and they serve a purpose, but they're also very messy, and if they're fruitless, please be fruitless, because you could step on all kinds of stuff while you're out there, as well as your children and/or your pets. And I think, I think I'm done, thank you.
Okay, we're going to try Nelia Maderos again, just bear with me for one moment. Nelia, please unmute yourself.
(inaudible) walking path due to all the debris that they drop, I know, I know they're pretty and they serve a purpose, but they're also very messy, and if they're fruitless, please be fruitless.
Okay. Nelia, can you unmute yourself, please?
(inaudible) stuff while you're out there, as well as your children and/or your pets.
I'm sorry, we're experiencing some technical difficulties.
(inaudible) again, just bear with me for one moment. I thought I did, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, hi, Nelia Maderos, 11 Maderos Lane, resident.
I'm, I'm sorry, Nelia, bear with us for just one moment.
One second. Let me, yes.
Just bear with us for one moment.
I thought I did, can you hear me? Okay, this is Nelia Maderos.
There we go, thank you.
Hi. You may or may not understand me because I'm, I'm going through chemo, so my brain isn't quite functioning as well as it should, and my husband doesn't know that I'm talking. This is for the developer.
Nelia, I'm sorry, do you have a device going in the background that is playing the meeting?
Okay, can you hear me? I turned everything off around me. Okay, this is Nelia Maderos. There we go, thank you.
Okay, we're getting some feedback from a device that is somewhere else.
So this is, this is for the developer.
I, I apologize, I'm going to mute you at this point.
No, there's, I have everything turned off.
Okay, I...
Everything is turned off.
We're still getting the feedback, I apologize.
Can you hear me?
Okay, you need to be checking. Okay, I apologize, we're going to have to move on, and we can maybe, we'll try and fix the problem and come back. So right now, we, is there anybody else who has any additional public comment? There's no additional public comment.
Thank you, at this time, I close public comment. Going back to the commissioners, what are your closing comments? Any other questions?
My only comment is I'd love to hear what Nelia has to say.
And I apologize for that.
Yeah, so I don't know what the, what the technical difficulties are, but what I would say is, at any point, if we can get them resolved and she can make her comment, I hope Chairman, you will be so kind as to reopen public comment so that we can hear from her.
Shall we give it another shot? So I will reopen public comment for Nelia.
Okay, Nelia, we're going to try this again. Nelia, I've asked you to unmute yourself, let's give this another shot. That will also provide feedback in the room because of the mics. Nelia, I am asking, I see you online, and I'm asking you to unmute yourself if you'd Okay, it seems like we don't have Nelia at this point.
Okay, sorry about that, Nelia, at this time, I close public comment. Well, thank you again to the applicant for your presentation. Sounds like, you know, we're both learning about the due process and what we need to do, and there's a few unanswered questions, well, a few things of modification that we need. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion from the commission.
Yeah, at this point, I am going to move for a continuance of the Oathill multifamily residential, major modification, to a mutually convenient time to be determined momentarily, or at our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at worst.
As Chair Cruz, planning commission, your next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting is August 22nd.
Rule call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Aye.
Vice Chair David Mohammed.
Aye.
Chair Bando Cruz.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crystal Malai is absent.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, thank you very much for that. Moving on to management and staff oral reports. Director, one second.
If we can hang on one second, I would just ask, I don't know if there's a possibility because time is of the essence to do a special meeting if the developer can finalize thoughts, come up with a proposal so we can... come up with a proposal so we can, and kind of take that approach. And that's why I said, you know, at a mutually convenient time, no later than. So I would encourage staff and developer to see about working together and let us know.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Moving back on to management and staff oral reports. Director Cooper.
Thank you, Chair Cruz. I just have a few updates for you. Let's see, the Crawford Apartments staff had a, received a resubmital from the applicant after a period, several months of quiet. So hopefully that will resolve the final issues with that project. We also received a recent resubmital from the billboard, upfront billboard. And so we'll be providing a response to that. Just initial, initial review is, it's not a whole lot different than their first submittal. Over in Harvest in Watson Ranch, the builder there would like to introduce a larger floor plan. It looks similar in the family of all the others, but I guess it's a need that's the customers have been asking for. And so that's under a modification, just to add that floor plan among the others that are already available. What's unusual is where there are model homes, they have a vacant lot. And this floor plan doesn't quite fit and meet the zoning standards. So we'll be bringing to you a variance application for that one single lot. Apparently, the others fit fine where they would put this house, just that one for the, it's like a foot. So anyway, we looked at it every which way, and it needs a variance. So that will be coming to the planning commission soon. And we have a new submittal for New Neighborhood in Watson Ranch by KB Home. And this is 136 homes on smaller lots, so it'll be a more affordable project. That is immediately north of the Fran Lemos apartments. And so that's a new submittal. In construction, of course, the Lemos Point Apartments received their occupancy permits. So that's all been signed off on, that was about two, three weeks ago. So they're moving in there, which is good to see, finally. It was the fire suppression equipment that needed to get done right before people can move in. So Hampton Inn Hotel down the street here is moving forward. Our Public Works folks just gave some plant check comments on their improvement plans. And they do have a building permit application that was submitted, and we've given them comments on that. Up north here by the airport, the Jivenoni Project, there is a mass grading application that came in in June. And Public Works staff has given comments on that to move forward. And.
Director Cooper, I'm going to interrupt you because my brain's not working. The Hampton Inn, I don't recall.
Oh, the Hampton Inn, this is a hotel that was architecturally designed to reflect the site next to it. It's over near Donaldson Way, Highway 29. And it was intensively looked at because it has an access point on Donaldson Way that requires a special purchase of a house lot to order to make the efficiency. It also has a pedestrian bridge connection to Canyon Plaza.
Yes, now, now you mention these things, now I recall.
It was, it was a very intensively reviewed project that once it's built, I think we'll be very proud to see. And the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission had a hearing on their land use compatibility update plan. And I believe it was continued. Do you remember, sorry, do you recall the status on that one? Counties and Land Use Compatibility Plan, I believe that was continued to a later meeting date.
Yes, and staff is working with the commission to bring that forward to city officials and move forward with a presentation on that.
Thank you. So that's our update for tonight.
Well, thank you, Director Cooper. All right, moving on to commissioner items. Commissioners, what are your items? Mitchell Goff.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Altman.
Tonight, I've got nothing. I'm hungry, so.
Vice Chair Mohammed.
I'm good, thank you.
As am I, so I'm good. Good night, American Canyon. You adjourned. It is zero or eight fifteen.